Good morning, we're on the air, on the internet, and we are live. Calling the meeting into order. Randy Burkin, Presiding Commissioner, Mr. Larry Strattman, Gary Hicks, Dr. Pam Brewer, County Clerk, Andrew Shealy from the Phelps County Focus joins us today. Got to make a couple of notes here, we'll get started. Couple of things to report. Okay, we have an appointment at nine o'clock with the Public Administrator Kathy Oliver regarding wars and their economic impact payments. And Kathy's not here. She was here a minute ago, is she coming back?
She left to grab something, and here she comes.
And here comes Kathy, okay.
Here.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are you Kathy?
I'm great, how are you all?
So far so good. Okay. You're going to talk to us about wars and their economic impact payments. So where is yours, ma'am?
Thank you. Okay, this shouldn't take long, it's more of an FYI for you.
Okay.
The public administrators have a little background, we have a Facebook page. And so, since this stimulus package was just talked about, some of the other public administrators have been toasting on that, and also getting emails about it. But some of the different facilities and agencies have been notifying them that they are demanding the stimulus that will go to our clients. And I had yet to see anything like that. So I got this email with this letter and these invoices for a thousand dollars. And I was like, you've got to be kidding me. This money is for the individual client, it's not for the facility. And it says that in your admissions agreement, it states here, and one of these individuals is not even on Medicaid. He's a veteran, he's private paid. So after reviewing this, I, and then what they plan to use the money for, I felt that this just was wrong, wrong in many ways. So I have contacted Senator Hawley, Senator Josh Hawley. I've contacted US Representative Jason Smith. And spoke with them, or spoke with their representatives. I have emailed, you know, I blacked out information, I emailed this to them. I sent this to the President of our association. She has sent it to the Search Protection Advocacy, which is a group of attorneys that represent individuals with disabilities and legal rights. And they felt that it's not accurate, not right, and suggested that we contact legislators, which I've already done. And so, I got an email back from Representative Smith's office that they have sent it on to Ways and Means to have it reviewed. Representative, Senator Hawley's office indicated that they would forward it on to Washington DC. Because I said, you know, if it's legal and they can do that, but I just don't think it's right. So, I mainly just keep these in the loop so that you can be aware of what's been requested. It does say on here, you know, if there are major funding issues within the life, and this one individual that is on Medicaid, he has six thousand dollars in burial, which as we know is not enough to bury somebody if you really want a burial. It's not to do with cremation and a gravesite service, but it's not enough to actually do the actual burial. And he does have a family. And so, you know, our job as the public administrator is to set aside funds. We don't make plans for burial, we just set aside funds. And then at the time of need, it's up to the family to decide what type of burial situation they choose. So, he could use more money that way. I don't think it's appropriate to ask for a thousand dollars from the stimulus money to remodel your agency. And that's what they've asked for in this letter.
Specifically for that purpose?
Yes, it says, "We will be using the proceeds to upgrade our building in Cape Girardeau and our building in Bourbon."
Is this the only one you received?
This is the only one I've received so far.
That hurts me, that's about that. That you take money from an elderly person who is
Disabled.
Disabled, and in a home. And say, "We really need new furniture." You know, that just, that hurts me.
And I have, I have some other folks that's in another agency. And we're going to use their stimulus to get dentures for them, two ladies. They're going to get dentures with their stimulus. And they also have outstanding pharmacy bills. So the funds will be used to catch up those pharmacy bills. You know, that's what, in my opinion, that's what stimulus should be go for. Clothing, you know, if they need new furniture, new bedding, dentures, things like this, burial.
Tell me what your agreement is with, with a home like this? That they accept Medicaid?
They accept Medicaid, they accept Medicaid. And then they get their SSI, their social security, and then the rest of their payment is Medicaid.
So there is no specification that, hey, if you come into a bunch of money, we get some of it?
Well, it states here, "If social security disability or any other foreign income does not meet the cost of room and board, any other monies that you have or that come in will either go toward the facility or a portion, and will go to the facility to make up the cost of room and board not covered by your monthly income."
Okay, so that's, that's in the agreement, that you and they and this facility have?
Room and board. I don't think maintenance and adding on to your facility is under room and board personally.
You'd have to question why they even put that in the letter, what they were going to use it for. Because it's not compelling.
No, no. And these individuals, what you've got to understand, these individuals are on, they're on a limited income, you know, social security or SSI. And all of their money, but thirty dollars, depending on which level they're in, thirty dollars, maybe fifty dollars, or the max is eighty dollars, goes to the facility. That's all they get a month to live on. But many of them are smokers, so that's all they get a month. And so, and so they get this, this stimulus money, which could be used for many things, clothing. I mean, you know, maybe they need a new bed, maybe they'd like to have a new recliner. I mean, simple things that we take for granted every day. And, and so, this is why I'm just like, you've got to be kidding me.
Yeah, I agree. Well, thank you for being an advocate for your people and for taking fight. And it had to go to Washington because that's where this money is coming from.
Right, right.
So, I know that Jason and Josh will take them to college for you, I'm just, I certainly will.
I am too, and I just basically wanted to keep you all in the loop of what is going on, even though we can't really do much about it. And, and to date, I don't have any stimulus money, yeah. If anybody's curious, I checked their direct deposits, and we're still waiting to get it.
Has anybody got stimulus money?
Some folks have gotten it.
Really? Good for you.
But anyway.
Okay.
So, thank you guys, and
Thank you Kathy, but
Neither of them are actually in Cape or Bourbon, so
There are two of them are in Bourbon.
Okay, so
So if I'm understanding it clear, Kathy, you're not going to make this payment until somebody forces you to, is that a fair assumption?
Exactly. I'm waiting on an answer back stating that I really have to do it.
Yeah, I think that's wise. Bless the luck with it, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay Kathy. Nice mask. Yeah, I wonder, I've got a mask, I don't
I've got a lovely new blue one.
Very masculine, they have Facebook.
Decorated colors. What's going on this morning?
I'm looking at, going out for a bid on my progress when we open back up.
You wanted to cross in the, on the
On my website.
Yeah, all the way across the front of the, whatever, three people, yes, correct.
I've got the main area, and there's that little window right there, that's about the sign-in area.
Yes.
So just, I mean, when we open back up, we're going to have to pay.
Sure.
Is Mark being bitchy?
I need to, he told me, gave me a name to contact.
Okay.
To have him come in and look at it and just size it.
I personally don't see a problem with that. See people come all over the community, so.
I made my staff, but still.
FYI, I was in Perkins Lumber in St. James the other day, had to do trip. They have constructed their own little, they already designed, just a little wood frame with a piece of plexiglass, you know, it's got a little pass-through space under it. So you're never frontal with the cashier or the customer. They have made them themselves, so there's folks out there that can and will do that for you, so. Good luck with that, it's a great unique debt.
Yeah, I'm looking at the logistics, so we can't use it. I mean, they have a sign that's
Right.
I mean, there may be three people.
No, and quite frankly, people that come through your door sometimes are sick. So they, you need to, I move on that with haste.
Yeah, I'm sure you get lots of takers.
I suspect, that's right. All right.
The state reached out to me late yesterday. Interested in doing focus testing in our area. Logistics still working on it. My understanding, would it would be like survey-based? From the state level, like mass surveys would go out for whatever and then upon those surveys, if random individuals were tested, looking at asymptomatics.
Would we not welcome that?
We would definitely welcome it.
I would think so.
It sounds like the first phase, there's going to be a location looking at, I think it's about five thousand here on the state.
Okay.
I've talked with Phelps Health yesterday about this, just trying to get the logistics of this worked out.
We would look to Phelps Health to, are they cut? I guess I'm confused, they're contacting us, or they contacting hospitals?
The state contacted us.
Okay.
And asked if I could find a testing site. The state will provide the PPEs, they will provide the testing materials and the transportation of the participants. We need to provide staff and a testing So I went ahead and contacted Phelps Health, they already have, I mean, they already have a testing site set up to see if this was something they would be interested in, which is six of them, work it into a separate stream. Still knowing, we aren't clear on how it's actually going to play out yet. They were very
They do it in their tent?
It'll be out there somewhere, yeah. Sounds like they're going to try and streamline to different routes. Did you say Mary Spills would take four hundred? It sounds like it would just be the Phelps area, it sounds like they're looking at just their wallets and codes. But again, I'm going to wait to kind of hear. And they said it would play out to be four hundred.
Tests, individual tests.
Is this connected, I watched the governor's press conference yesterday, if you change the criteria on which you can be tested? Is this, is this part of that? Or is that
I think it's separate, because when I asked this morning if it would be tested through the state lab, I was pretty contracted with a private partner in that, or turnaround time would be comparable to state labs, so thirty-six, forty-eight hours.
Has the, has the state sent us what the changing criteria is for testing? And what can you put that in a nutshell for us, what the changing criteria is? You still have to be symptomatic?
Yes, still have to be symptomatic, or have been contacted. That is a possibility.
I think I have that on an email.
But it has drastically
And we have the testing capacity?
They're going to send the tests?
I, I would assume you
Let's come to Phelps Health?
Yes.
Okay.
I haven't heard that we have, but we would have that.
Is participation voluntary?
Oh, I was
And for, well, don't let me finish what you're looking for, there's actually a little more question for you. The Governor of New York is screaming for more testing, more tests, yeah.
Does the patient have a fever or symptoms of low respiratory illness? Healthcare worker, law enforcement, fire department, first responders living in congregate living facilities, higher risk for outcomes, are they hospitalized? And a lot of provider clinical judgment.
Say that again?
Provider critical judgment.
Provider critical judgment.
Have there been any contact with a case or pending case in the last fourteen days? And if yes, it's all that the state's or they really did.
That is opening it up. Case or pending case?
With a positive or one that is pending.
So, like, for example, about the advisory about Price Chopper. So if you were at Price Chopper at the time, that
It could, it would be one of those, we have to, you know, we have Because when we talk with these individuals, we're going to know more about
Okay, now the, if we are endless, they don't get four to six hundred tests in Phelps. For willing participants, there would be no criteria for this test. You don't have to be symptomatic, you don't have to know randomly, it's just a random test. Check the general population to see if it's out there and we don't know it, that long chart of it. Okay, that, that's what we need.
No charge, it's a safety rating. There's a survey, you're selected randomly.
Yeah.
You're going to go do this.
Okay, would the hospital get rid of that for their staff? Okay, okay.
But is this a tox to happen, or is this for sure?
It sounds for sure, but it's a lot of, we're looking at this, we're wanting this, we're trying to get this.
All right. Well, this may relate to one of the subjects I got a call on this morning that I wanted to share with everybody. State Treasurer's Office is getting ready to distribute monies from the CARES Act to counties. And it's, let me have, let me get my notes. Okay Pam, I'll give you a heads up, they're supposed to get a form out to us on or about the twenty-eighth of April. We have to get it signed and get it back to them by May the first, I think. You know about this? Have you heard anything about this? Okay, this is from the Treasurer, State Treasurer's Office. And the funds that they receive through CARES Act will be distributed based on population. But it is for and only for direct virus expenditures. So, it would relate to this situation perhaps, the cost of getting these tests completed, any other costs that we would identify.
Plexiglass.
Plexiglass would be an excellent example.
So that's direct buyer?
Hmm?
What was that, was direct, what expenditure?
Corona-related expenditures, Andrew, excuse me. Yeah, you know, which you can't spend it to payroll. You could only use it to remedy the impact of coronavirus.
That might be, though. Probably for the employees that were
Required for
I have to tell you my funding, I'm
This would be an appropriate use of those funds, for sure. So, we have, he did not have a clue how much money or when it would come, but it, he seemed to think there would be money from that act coming our way, coming to every county's way. Okay. All right. Now, when Andrew reports on this, are we going to get a lot of calls saying, "Am I going to be tested?" I don't know. Might be, Andrew, it's okay.
I, I don't know the answer.
No, nobody does
I don't know, I need to take a turn around and say, huh?
Never mind.
Never mind.
Okay, maybe, Andrew, if you could make that clear in your coverage, why he, probably, and that's, I mean, you want a random sampling, there you go. If you can't sample everybody, get a random sample. Okay. Well, I am so, and I guess everybody is anxious to get a report on the progress of getting these tests out. These readily available, now they're doing them at home, I saw one advertised or mentioned on the national news that first responders, emergency workers could get this test, tested at home, send it in. But it's a hundred and nineteen dollars per test.
Well, sorry, I didn't expect it higher than that.
Really? What's so expensive about it? Okay.
Run diagnostics, testing supplies?
Okay, well, that's too bad, because I was hoping it was three dollars or something. Do you know Pam, why it would be so expensive? They have to have some reactive agent that only comes from some remote source.
They have to have a specific one. The plague acid of the virus.
Well, it's high demand, every union in the United States needs to be checked. There's a lot of us. Okay, what else?
I'm probably going to get a lot of questions on what's it going to look like when we start reopening?
We've got the same questions, and we understand the governor's going to brief us today, tomorrow? When's the governor going to tell us? Yeah, he's due out with a scenario of what it will look like for gradual reopening. And his target is that May the third day, is I understand. And our order expires with his, is that the way we fixed that last time?
It is for review today.
It is for reassessment today.
It's easy fix, we'll just reduce to the third, quarter third.
Yeah, you were in the process of assessing it.
That's right. And we wanted to get on the same
As, as you were assessing, he was saying, you know, I'm extending until May
Through May third. Because his was set to expire tomorrow.
Correct. Any feeling or help the city council? And still looking at, will you love it? There's a lot of questions, I think.
No, the only thing that's happened, City Council Monday night, is the mayor said that the first meeting in May, he would be bringing some suggestions to City Council.
And that date would be where?
Would be the first Monday. And that's the third, it's the same day. So, the governor's going to give his opinion on that Monday.
Monday the fourth.
Monday the fourth, and City Council meets Monday the fourth.
Well, I think the governor's going to tell us what it's going to look like this week, is he not?
I think he's going to unveil plans.
That, yeah, we'll see, we'll be able to see a plan, because that was a lot of our argument from the local levels, is no, no one was given a heads up as to what this was going to look like. And it went out and went into effect midnight on Sunday, Monday, with enforcement coming from health departments, and we didn't even see it. We had no idea what to find. So that was the prescription, will you please give us and allow us to see this, or counties to decide, you know, what works will work, what's not going to work. But we keep being assured that that will
What's your best guess? A C.
I think you can open it up with just social distancing complaints, because your organization of business is not social distancing. Probably, they're called. That's what I think it's going to look like, I think you could open up restaurants. I can't swear to that, but I think you could open up restaurants.
Some states have.
Yes.
Some states have. And quite frankly, if you look at the demographics, and I think you and I have talked about this, of the two hundred and eight people who died, a hundred and eighty-five of over the age of fifty. It was forty-seven in one nursing home. So there's, there's twenty-five percent of total deaths there. So, do you penalize the economy of everyone under the age of fifty? Because of people over the age of fifty won't stay home. But I, I get how social contacts, you know, I'm twenty-two, and I get it, but I take it home to grandparents, you know, I get that. I understand that. The economic hardship that are placed on people right now. There has to be that balance, and I think we always knew that, and you said this from the very beginning, maybe it was tough to figure out when to close businesses, it's going to be tough to figure out when to open. And so, I think we're seeing that balance now. Are people still going to get sick after they open businesses? Yes. Is the government going to be subject to accusations? Sure, because somebody's going to get sick. So I think what the governor's thinking, we can't ever guarantee that somebody's not going to get sick. A year from now, people are going to get sick. But you can't shut down the economy for every based on, I mean, everybody under the age of, ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of people under the age of thirty are recovering. So they're for your
A little comfort to old guys.
Very little comfort to old guys, but you know, if I, make me responsible for that, not the governor. I, I have the responsibility to stay on. The governor should not mandate that I stay on.
Because our message is still going to have to be very, this is going to be very strong, that social distancing still has to occur. This is going to, people are still going to have to take it upon themselves, if you are sick, you take home. Your lawyers are going to have to be aware that if you show up sick, or someone comes to your business and shows up sick, you have the right, send them home.
But tougher thing is when you have people with compromised immune systems that work for you. What do you do? Do you suggest, yeah, why it shouldn't be working? If you have this, so there's some tough questions. And it's, as always, it's a delicate balance, when it's appropriate, when it's not.
And I mean, the hospital will play a very key part, because they don't just serve our area. They have to be aware of what's going on everywhere. Or Ed or whoever's under from the hospital, comes and says, we've got a search test, we have to
Do you have a sense of the last county is kind of, because that's really the only hotspot we've got, really, in our area here, that they kind of level off. I mean, I know that doesn't come across
I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. Because last I heard, they had thirty-seven cases.
And I'm not sure what the brackets are, I mean, is it make close the bases? I'm, I'm just not sure, we're close and we can talk it.
There were several cases I know were more related to, to travel. And you could have read the list and probably that was kept it off the hard disk. Don't know that for sure, but I think
Everybody seems to be on a stable but it will come, I mean, it will It's an unrealistic expectation that people will not have cases. Especially as more things start opening up, more travel starts happening across the state. We will, we will see cases.
I tell you, seriously, I watch the President's speech conference about every day. It's, it's two hours long, Sunday, but I watch it every single day. And it is incredible to me what he has mobilized in six weeks. It's incredible. And the number of companies that are, that are now bringing forward possible solutions. I think, I think one hundred and forty companies have made applications. You know, so he's got people working on this, and it is just none in my lifetime has been like this. In fact, the president, the critics, you got you know, Kelly was a businessman first.
All right, keep us posted, Ashley. We will be most anxiously waiting for the governor's characteristics of a gradual reopening. As far today, would you be in concurrence at a wise strategy for the county of Phelps to extend their order till the third of May, consistent with the governor's order? Would that be your pleasure?
Of course. So that, that is a Sunday, and you meet on Tuesday, fifth?
Well, probably we'll know, maybe we can't hurry. He'll, he'll tell us what he's going to do before the third, surely. And we'll, let's put it on the agenda for that last Thursday prior to then. But I, I don't see at this point how we could do much to follow the governor.
No, we have so far.
You can incur with that.
It, it's difficult for me to maintain this order here, when there's a statewide that really supersedes anything that we do.
Well, that's a fair question, we need to
I, I, I do think we, we need to support the governor. And so
You're cool with that.
I, I would, I would say that we, we need to look at it that way, I think. And by then, we'll probably be able to see that came
And perhaps before
Well, yeah, if the governor, if the government, the governor lifts his order or does some sort of adjustment to it, I think we need to be able to act appropriately.
Okay, so that would be the thirtieth, Pam, or Eleven P M. Eleven PM. Three.
I won't be here
I won't be here, Andy.
I guess I could.
I fully intend to be snoring at eleven.
Yeah, that's way past my bed.
Okay.
Okay. So, so we're gonna review it next Thursday and see where we stand for there.
Yeah, but they wouldn't know what the governor
Have to see. I think they'll have more information there. But I think if he's gonna, if he's gonna lift as of May the fourth, he's gonna make that announcement on the fourth. Then I think we're good. We're good to stay. I did get a, I saw on Facebook last night, Mayor for which you own St. James, said that they are standing by. He does a podcast every Saturday morning.
No, I did not. Well, that's pretty cool.
And he said they right now are steering what the governor
The city council and the mayor are consistent. Okay, all right, well, that's kind of where our wind's blowing too.
Yes.
And C R O would be the exception, but theirs is due to expire the eleventh. They would have the option of changing that on the fourth then. Okay.
And they will have the benefit
I don't have a feel for which one.
Well, I, I don't either, because I'm, I'm talking to John a little bit. But they will have the benefit of the governor's order, who will do that probably through four o'clock in the afternoon. So, and they're, they're nimble enough to be able to react to that, I think.
Okay, we'll get Gary back in here, that'll be our motion. We'll go to the Okay. Is it midnight, May the third? Pam, do you know off the top of your head, do you know?
I believe it's midnight, May the third, right?
We have change.
Through the third.
Through the third, so it'll be eleven fifty-nine. How's that work, Andrew?
Twelve oh one.
On the fourth or something, I don't know. That just the minutia, devil's in the detail, you know? We'll get it right here in a minute. Think I shared my bedroom with a mosquito last night. Oh.
They can't find us outside, they're coming in the
Yeah. Do they carry the virus, any chance? Hope not.
Not malaria.
No, just a piece cake. What's the other, we used to, what is it? Mosquitoes? We had them go with them.
What was that? I don't know what you're talking about.
I mean, recent years, we've had Zika, they're
Zika?
You know what was interesting last night? I can't remember who I was, but but you know how once AIDS was a pandemic, and then AIDS went in one? Still to this day, we have no cures, we have no vaccines. Yeah. Well, that's interesting that that was now, this transmits easier than any of that transmit, that's more but you know, we thought we couldn't live to now. Without our vaccine, we did.
Eleven fifty-nine. Eleven fifty-nine, this is not the updated one. I've got eleven fifty-nine PM Friday, eighth to twenty-fourth.
So we go eleven fifty-nine PM, May the third?
I'm thinking so.
Okay. That'll be your motion.
Hey. Yes. Hey, listen, you know, I have a challenge for my, I actually
So it's gonna be extended to five, three, five, twenty-two, eleven fifty-nine. With reassessment.
Maybe you, you, you could, I don't think that needs to be in a motion, but that is our plan. And I think our order says unless altered, I mean, it gives you a reload up real.
I mean, is that a motion that you could do over the phone? I mean, or do you have to actually be here to put on the tool, like, what did, and you don't need to talk to them?
Well, we would have to, we would have to post a teleconference meeting twenty-four hours in advance, so I, I, I don't know that our lifting at that moment is that important. I mean, if it happens on Monday, and we don't meet here at nine o'clock Tuesday.
Yeah. You think there's a chance that'll happen? Who knows? Okay. Okay.
You know, even Kansas City has not had a major problem. You look at the numbers in Kansas City of, of number of cases versus the number of deaths. It's, it's, it's St. Louis. It's St. Louis that's, that's the issue. And out like, as, as close as Franklin County, who's had problems.
Well, they're over, they're real.
Excuse me? Yeah, they are, you're exactly right about that.
They're real.
But you get Jefferson County, St. Charles County, Franklin County, and then St. Louis City, St. Louis County. That's, that's where, that's where this entire, I mean, Missouri's in pretty decent shape, other than those four counties.
Yeah, it's not the worst.
Yeah, not the worst.
We want to hope we're not in either.
Well, I think the whole idea of this social distancing compress that curve to, and all, in order to give the healthcare industry an opportunity to prepare to give adequate treatment to all, you know, to everyone, has, has worked out pretty good, I think. It's a presentation about the Phelps Health, it has two hundred and fifty beds available to COVID. Yeah, for COVID treatment.
And fifty ventilators.
Is, is, is pretty good. Now, the whole thing about the ventilators, right now, they're saying in New York, there's only ten percent of those that are, that are put on ventilators live. But having said that, over ninety percent have, have at least one comorbidity problem, diabetes, high blood pressure. Just, you know, and, and eighty percent have two. Health risks, so.
But take that with a grain of salt too, just because of like past these two forty-six, we don't want
Well, that's absolutely true, but
We have to protect our hospitals.
Ten would scare us, right?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor, Gary, to extend our order to eleven fifty-nine PM, May the third. Be worthy of your second, sir.
But we're gonna review ours. We're not gonna review ours, we're just gonna I think week through today, we take the temperature and see where we're at, see what the go, what kind of information the governor has sent down the mic. I figured that far, as far as our order, we, we set it for the third, if it needs to be rescinded, rescinded or revised somehow on that Thursday. Well, i- if he changes his order, can we have an order that's more stringent?
Yes. You can be more stringent, you cannot be less.
And the order that we've passed and the one we're doing today provides the opportunity to resend it at any time, as I recall, to rethink it. Okay, that's your second, Commissioner? As painful as it is for you.
You realize the pain I'm going through.
I do.
The hype over this has, has been much worse than, than what it needed to be.
But I warned you of that as well. If everything we put into place worked appropriately, it would appear that we did all this for nothing.
That was our goal.
That was the goal. We wanted to make it look like we took all these stringent steps to keep, knock that curve down, to keep it from coming, to make it look like we overreacted. We, I, we knew, I knew, I said, I came to you that this will be the appearance that we get. It means it's working, and we still have to continue these measures. Even when things open up, I mean, the social distancing message still has to be pushed, you know, the take it upon yourself to make sure, maintain there's no nonessential anything. We still have to do it on an individual level.
Right. And along that way of thinking, we need to express our gratitude and thanks and admiration of people of Phelps County for doing what they were told to do.
They have done an amazing job. Overall, they, they have done.
That would be my opinion as well. So did you struggle your way through that, Gary?
Well, we can't really do anything else, because the governor's orders in place, so what would
Yeah, it could be fifty-five.
Yes.
Move to second, we pass, may eleven fifty-nine on May the third.
But Gary, I appreciate that you're willing to process
It, it
You are not alone. You're not alone. I mean, you're getting hit with it from everything.
Sure. They're having parades and making signs and demonstrating and cities
And, and I, you know, and I, I appreciate all that, but I think common sense has it that that we should support every effort to diminish the effect of coronavirus. Not only physically, but financially. Presently, all the shopping done on the internet is gonna make it extremely difficult for, for Phelps County to provide the services that our citizens have become so incredibly hard to do that. So the casualties of this so-called war go far past those that are afflicted by the virus itself. And I understand that that we need to look out for the health of people, but, but people need to look out after they're so, as it so, personal response goes along like, I, I have, I have wipes in my drawer. Wipe my hands, steering wheel, my door handle, my radio knobs, so I make sure that I can hear Rashlin Bob. I've got gel right there in my cup holder. When I hand McDonald's my credit card card, I gel up after I get my credit card back, then they hand me the bag of food I need. You know, I do this on the outside of my cup. Take nothing for granted, you know?
Okay.
Hey, this is a very painful time.
Yeah, and, and the fair question is, will we Huh?
It is not
No, no, that's what I was
Well, that's, that's the pessimistic part that I, you know, realistically, no, it's not gonna be eliminated. But there comes a time when there is an acceptable risk in order to actually have a life. And there, there is, every day, when you get up and walk out of the door, there is a certain risk that you're involved with. If, if you are a first responder and you have accepted that risk all along, as a police requirement, EMT. I mean, everybody that goes outside their door has, has risk. You can have a risk inside your home. Falling or cutting your finger while you're slicing. We cannot live our lives in paralysis of fear. And, and I don't want to exacerbate that by you know, shelter in place orders that may, don't need to be orders more suggestive.
Okay. Duly noted. All right, Ashley, thank you. We'll stay on top of it. See what the governor has to say. Can't say this this afternoon or tomorrow, he's gonna release those. They will be most interesting, how you plan to go about it. I think that in some states, they say you can open your business, we're not shutting any business down as long as you maintain social distancing. But how do you do that in a salad bar? How do you do that in a tattoo bar? How do you do that in a beauty shop or a barber shop? How you do that, I don't know. Maybe it's a mask. Yeah, mask and perhaps gloves, I don't know. But sooner or later, you get a haircut. Well, Gary.
We didn't celebrate, did we?
No.
I mean, years.
It's back to that, okay, if you're gonna mandate gloves and masks, and there's no access to them at the moment. It's not a whole number.
No access to what?
Give masks and personal, you know, things like that. There are chains, it's not, you can't, you can't get, you know, I mean, if you mandate stuff, you have to make sure they get it.
Well, maybe we won't mandate, however, I don't know, let's say, that's the governor's problem, let him solve it. Yeah, sure. Yeah, I did see, catch an interesting piece on the news about disinfecting the ninety-five mask?
Yes, yes.
Yep, the sixty times?
Oh, I, I heard twenty.
Oh, whatever, I probably
Yeah, it's still significant, I mean
Significant, sure.
To go from a period of time where N ninety-five are disposable to now you can decontaminate them and use them, you know, it's just, just I'm curious. En route action to vetting right now is a that will have the capability to do eighty thousand in ninety-five.
I read that too.
So it is en route. They've pushed out the information to hospitals already, local departments have been alerted to it.
Save your N ninety-fives then.
What is it, UV? Definitely in raps.
Too deep for me.
I heard a tear call.
Okay, well, that's the kind of solutions we crave. Let's get creative. Because then you go dig into your trash, pull out all those N ninety-five, they're used. Dang it.
I agree with that. But right now, it's a throughput in ninety-fives, I know the state with the virus to be able to do the facial as well.
But even our hospital, and I think you probably read this too, or I saw it, and edited it in a Facebook video, explaining to people about this. There's a KN ninety-five that's from China, that they have fit problems, and China's price gouging us on, on those, and then they don't fit once they get here.
And that's what was recalled from
Yeah.
Oh, those are the ones that the state got checked up. Okay.
I think what we'll find is that when this is all said and done, the law on manufacturing especially from China.
The lawsuit, the Missouri lawsuit was mentioned, was mentioned in the briefing by the pres, well, a reporter. And the president was like, I wanna see the lawsuit.
Did you see China's This is absurd.
That was basically
But, but good for Eric Smith, I mean, he's proactive, and that, that sends a state to the rest of the country, because they're not, that's gonna take this from China and, and so, I think, I think that's important. Did I read, was it Black and Decker? That has decided to bring some manufacturing home from China, from Black and Decker, I read that last night. And they're gonna build a plant in Texas. Here, that's three and thirty. Most, most, well, most, uh, Americans and Americans back to work, you know?
I mean, our businesses want this rally.
They will.
Alcohol distilleries, making kids sanitizer, it's very, it's free.
Here in Phelps County, right? Mayor Maxine here, Jim Belmont, that got together as far as making sanitizer.
The growler do something this month?
Growler did. They did.
I mean, it's just
Without a date beers. That's how
It works, you know, if it works, you know?
So
We, we can pull together.
We can. We will, we can, we will, we will as a county, we will as a state.
All right, Ashley. Thank you. Anything else breaks, just let us know, otherwise we'll wait for the governor's, I'm really anxious here on this one.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good one, Stacy.
Somebody knows you're in grumble. Okay. Yes, you finished all your invoices, Gary.
I believe I Did you read? Hold on. You read the back.
Are you When did it start, April second? That was shooting on top.
And, and it is, but they were, they were there like that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. I was adding to the back of the stack.
That's right, I know. And I just realized that halfway
Somebody, I want to break it, it's located.
Yeah, I've seen those people's yards.
Well, there's a big one, three by three foot or four by four, maybe it's on four.
Yes.
It'll be okay.
One thing I do think we need to be prepared for, and I've asked made an inquiry into the city of Brawley to have a meeting with them sometime soon about that.
made an inquiry into the city of Brawley to have a meeting with them sometime soon about that, what reopening would look like. I don't think it's a, it's not the way to do it, but reintroduce seven or eight thousand college students back in this year. What the, what we could expect, what we, probably Ed needs to be a part of that conversation, Ashley. You know, what, what, when you bring that many people to the outside, what's it going to look like? What do we need to be prepared for?
So hopefully by that time, testing will give some sort of modeling credibility to the number of actual infected people there are. Hopefully, there'll be some blind tests. Like like this is going to go on potentially here to find out what percent of the population will test positive for for having had COVID before. And and then then you get more of a complete idea just what's going on. Now, I I understand that Columbia campus will be open. Is is that all all the campuses will be open?
I I would suspect, just listening to Chancellor uh Donning last week, that he he indicated certainly if you've got an application in where your son or daughter is wanting to come to Missouri S T, please continue the process. So that tells me that he's very optimistic that uh will go on, will certainly be open. I don't think anybody can guarantee this wants to be business as usual. They may have desks in classrooms in their sixteen apart. You know, and some things like that. That's certainly better than closing down all the other. So.
And and I know the disinfecting, the big campus, I'm sure there have been some here. I think that this should lead to some new disinfecting in the HVAC system. That looks like a potential for a huge industry to disinfect. This is having more air turnover. It's an airborne illness. You know, if you can, if you can get the turnover in a building once an hour.
What's typical now?
I'm not sure. We, we should.
This building is seven minutes.
What?
Change it to here.
Oh, is he really? So I'm gonna try.
Or is it, we gotta.
You gotta say.
Oh, no.
We might not enough to be dealing with this, but in an election here.
Yes, yes.
It's crazy, Andrew. Yeah, let's put, let's see, there ain't reason. We'll talk to Faith and then maybe pick up. We'll watch it.
Peter get that.
Yeah, we watched it last week. Very well. You were gone, didn't you?
No. Did Peter come in and?
He just went to S T.
Let's just see.
Don E U.
Those, I guess, what, no, I like, one key player, I like that, that wanting to have a meeting with Dr. Goodman should should certainly be a part of that meeting. He's the, I think, the head of the health services, I believe, at S T. Is that not Dennis Goodman, do you know?
Yes, it is.
I think it is. So, yeah. So he would be a, somebody we would ring on to understand what was.
He has a pretty strong ass. Down already on.
Yep.
I think it's back. Let me, before Faith gets here, brief you guys on what the courts want to do. Pam, are you familiar with what Sue Brown is proposing to do in here in the first week in May?
No, she actually inquired about use of the multi-purpose room the first week in May for, she said, it looks like we're going to have to have court, court and book.
Yeah. They've come up with an alternative I think is probably going to be agreeable to all since they can't use multiple. Pam's election equipment is in.
Well, they can actually during that timeframe. And I, we talked with her and I don't know whether that was before or after.
Okay.
You talked to her. But we told her that, um, we thought that in the first week of May, we could definitely get her.
Well, if she prefers that, what came up here was to use that door for the entrance and put the people that had to appear in court in here on Monday and Wednesday. They'll, they'll have a laptop connected to the courtroom where the judge and the juvenile.
Why can't they use it?
Because of the COVID virus exposure.
So it's okay to bring COVID virus here if it's not the same.
Yeah, then there would be no face-to-face contact. They, in other words, the the people involved in the court action would stay here and leave here and never expose upstairs to outside influence. That was the theory. And whether it be here or the multiple person.
Yeah, I'd work, I'd work the multiple person because, you know.
Okay, well, unless you fellows object, I would say it'd be their choice. They were going to situate the two tables, as I recall, so that the two parties involved are separated by the six-foot requirement. And they really leave them in their cars until it was their time to appear in the court and then they would call on their cell phones. Apparently, they've been doing this in Plassey County with some success. Because there are some court actions, particularly when involved children have to occur, if virus or no virus.
Yeah, that that needs to occur in the multiple.
Well, it'd be, yeah, it'd be first choice. They could, but she was under the impression when we talked that she couldn't.
Yeah, I might have talked for that.
Okay, all right. They, Pam's election stuff.
So.
Because of the June, hurry June.
We, we, the election stuff. Move back in here, I can always plug.
Whatever.
Whatever. Pam's got at least a one-week solution. I like that.
If at all. Well, no, and they can use that private entrance to the multiple person without ever coming into the lobby. So it would, yeah, be first choice.
Shut the cage. I mean, shut the cage, you know, the gate.
Could, could we have Peter come and see if you do another conversation that you had with the judge?
Upcoming events down there and you just say scroll down a little bit.
And so how?
Every business in your county.
That's really right.
Right here?
I would think so.
Do I have to?
You might have to.
Hey, coffee? Okay, I do this. Throw. B?
I just.
A little bit of.
I was there.
You all see? Nope, I didn't wear.
No.
Okay, oh, Robin, Robin, put up a glass.
Hmm?
Robin, so we put up glasses at office too.
Like scratch, yeah.
Actually, just technically, it says all the glass has with the quarter, so I grabbed it. Something, but no. And it's us, who left, who left, who left, the assessor? I hate that cat is all that's for me.
Put two deaths together, you can get sixty.
That right, correctly?
I've seen businesses that have done that. In fact, where I buy gas, they set up just a stack of crates to ensure succeed between you and the register.
Smart.
Maybe go away. I hate, I hate, I hate your, your foyer. It brings you free.
I use this.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Where's this? I'm looking up and now I'm looking down.
There's Faith. Good morning.
You could.
Yeah, I saw it.
Well, that should, shouldn't have been on the front page of the website? Compared with the chancellor's.
Let's see. We can talk to Faith before they find that. What do you got to talk about, Smart and Faith? I saw your name on here. Just lost it.
Yep, just about having a monitor with scrolling information. So that was just, Larry suggested that I come in. Do an official.
Scrolling information. We talked about this.
Collector information with other office information, make it easier for our clients to see what's going on in the courthouse.
Include the courtrooms.
Huh?
Include the courtrooms. The dockets.
Somebody being entertained by watching me.
Yeah.
So this is just a.
Heads up.
Yeah.
Okay, certainly, we would need Sue screw in on that if they would be the one to provide the data for the dockets. Right now, it's on the clipboard up here.
Right.
Will you guys be the central gathering information for anybody else?
Yes, yes. No. Oh, it's almost. Until November. Then that's a different story, but for now. So I'm envisioning a thumb drive.
That's good.
And so if someone else needed to do, you know.
And you have the technological knowledge to be able to bury up all that information, all of it off.
No idea. Don't know what it entails. So I invited our tech people here. So just to just to kind of brainstorm. But so I I'm not quite sure what that will entail, but I don't think it's a whole lot. It's still information. Still images versus internet connection versus video. So I I think it should be very basic on the tech side.
Yeah, and 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 the information on the scroll, I don't think we really want to create that we also don't get to use with too much information. Because if it doesn't scroll fairly regularly, it's of no value.
Exactly, exactly. Yes. But it's to help our staff. It's to help the public. I just, I believe it's beneficial for everyone.
That's the general information of, you know, if if there's not going to be a salary there, because she got to the timber and whatever, you know, just passports. Room one-on-one, whatever it is, you know, pay your tax, room one-on-one.
Correct, oh, yeah, correct. And maybe an alphabetical list versus an office list. So it's, it's, it's easier to, you know, to read.
How much money are we talking about, Faith?
Well, not quite sure, but we're probably talking with, because we have to get a bracket so it can sit. And I think we're talking about a thousand dollars.
That's pretty much.
That's maybe for one.
One bar.
Yeah, I guess. And I don't, honestly, don't want, I don't know how big that monitor is.
Is that what you'd want?
Maybe something smaller. I mean, that would be nice. I just, I, you know, I want everyone involved to see.
Yeah, it was about fifty-two inches.
I would say maybe, I was thinking fifty to sixty. I don't know what they make.
This one is about a fifty-two inch.
So, I mean, it has to be large enough for people.
Sorry, David's issue.
Large enough for people to see. I think thirty-two is a little too small. You know, we we do want especially if we place that little up high, you know, so.
You know, we might do, Faith, if you'd be willing, since you're willing to be the monitor, if that's the right word, start monitoring now. Get, start accumulating the data that might go on and ask people that might feed it and run it on. We'll run it on this one. Need be, just see what it'd look like.
Sure.
And see how much.
If you put it on a thumb drive, we can play it right in here.
And it may be more than you want. I mean, it sues, that's one of the worries in most of dockets.
Right.
I've got a court appearance, hell, monitor, you know, how do I find out where I'm supposed to be, one, two, three, or whatever? That would be the one that we're in most for. Boy, it'd be great if we get rid of that clipboard. There are people standing up there going like this with eight people behind them trying to see what.
And in the end, maybe that's something she wants to do separately.
Well, that could be. That could be.
On the second floor, have a monitor.
That might be.
It might supposed to be.
Yeah.
Which quarter must be.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Might be something. That would be a conversation for you and Sue perhaps to have.
Yeah.
Tell her what you're thinking.
Call her up and, yeah.
Yeah, because on the one downstairs, they could just have a scroll that says dockets are available on second floor or mon- uh.
Yes, that would be, that would be ideal.
Send people.
That would be ideal.
And of course, the judges would need to talk about it. She would need to discuss with judges or you would, somebody would make sure they're cool with it.
Yeah, great.
All right.
Well, we're headed. So I like the idea of practicing first without driving and just seeing visually what that would look like. So, great.
All right, Faith, thanks. You want to watch the chancellor?
Wired. But to answer your question totally is, yes, all of those things will be implemented. The well-thought-out plan. It's coming to attrition now. We should see a early repopulation of campuses. Well-thought-out, well-organized, observing to social distancing, starting to occur very quickly. Quickly.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. So as you heard from Dr. Goodman, that we assure you that we will not do anything to compromise the safety of our students, faculty and staff and the community on this campus. Let me move on to another question. You receive questions about how promotion of faculty from assistant to associate and associate to full professor will be effective in the upcoming academic year. To the fullest extent, we will follow the bylaws and regulations of the university and our commission and tenure committee. But I defer this question to you, of course, as well. Thank you.
The timeline for promotion and tenure in the upcoming academic cycle is expected to be the standard timeline. Act that process has just started this past week with the communication to department chairs asking them to confirming the identity of individuals who are scheduled to come up in the upcoming academic cycle of tenure promotion as well as getting names to come up for tenure promotions. There is no intention at all to change where dates within that schedule. If there were entertainment of changing those dates, that would be done in consultation with the tenure promotions policy committee as well as the collective rules and regulations specifically with the Office of General Counsel as well as other important constituencies such as separate department chairs. But there is no intention to change that timeline. It will look like a standard community promotion timeline.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. So let me, let me say again that we may attempt an effort to make sure that the university will continue its business to the extent possible as usual as we can. So this falls in that same category. We will continue with the process of the community work rules and regulations of the campus of whether it begins to continue and promotion or other similar. The campus is growing, obviously, but the university isn't. We will continue the work of the university. We will be awarded. Let me then move on to the next question. The question is, on Monday, Venture Chancellor Ford announced a one-point-five percent pocketed resume budget over the coming fiscal year. So the S M T cut the cover. Uh, probably, uh, to be open about this, let me, let me just say a few words and then I'll, I'll pass the question to our chief financial officer, his particular of coaches that we are going to take in this regard. Uh, we will do everything in our power to minimize the impact on the core mission of the university. Uh, and that is delivering the state-of-the-art, technology-centric, rigorous and broad-based education for our students. So that is number one. Uh, and then. And then we will do that with all precautions with regards to safety, security, campus life, remote delivery of our curriculum, and so on, so forth. So in order to be able to do that, we need to also balance our budget. So like every other campus in this nation right now, we are implementing multiple contingency plans. These include all kinds of approaches of reducing functions that we can, we can combine or integrate with other programs. In fact, President Troy has asked us to look into combining functions across campuses. So if there are common denominator services that can be done at one campus and the other campuses, we will do that. So you should know that obviously we have been thinking about all measures to be able to maintain our, our balance. I have said that to you in our previous communication where the S and T, Andy and Brock. I mean, we are close to 4.2 or 4.5 billion dollars of budget reduction for the balance of this year. And something more substantial when you reference 12.5% covering that this in any, if not higher, for nation. So we have all contingency plans, and I'll see if we'll discuss our plans with you. And if there are any further questions after that, we'll be, we'll be happy to do that.
Thank you, Chancellor. We are looking at different budget scenarios, we'd ask our leadership to look at multiple tiers and what the impact would be on operations and on the institution across the board. As you all know, anytime we we talk about a reduction in the neighborhood of ten percent or more, because we're eighty percent people in our organization, any of these types of activities will have an impact. But we are trying to be very, very thoughtful and strategic as we look through all of these different types of possibilities. We are looking at a slightly different approach this year because of the increased uncertainty in our funding streams brought on by the pandemic. And one of those things is that we will prepare a budget based upon our best estimate. And right now, we're targeting that twelve to fifteen percent. But then we will revise that budget in July and August and then either take additional actions that had been identified previously based upon our student population need. So if our students all come back, as we hope they will, then those, we may not have to modify that budget. If for some reason that doesn't happen, or they come in different, different areas or different type, or even maybe more than we planned for, then that will be very positive and we can reinvest in any year. But it will be a very mobile and interactive budget phase this year, but it's been, been very, very thoughtful of me with a very long-term strategic.
Thank you, Eva, let me, let me add a little bit to what people said that, as I've said in my written communication with you. Believe it or not, we are still ahead when it comes to the enrollment of undergraduate and master's students. We are ahead of last year at this point, despite all the, you know, talent flows that happened here. Not quite much, but we are ahead of last year. And as I have appealed to all of our faculty and students that can serve as ambassadors to the broader community, please let them know that the campus will be open in the fall semester and that they should not let the stress of the moment interfere with their major decisions. They need to sign off, they need to register, I have a similar communication with all of our citizens who have been standing on the sidelines wondering what is going to happen. Let them know the campus will be open in the fall and they need to register and, as Eva mentioned, we are counting on, we are counting on our enrollment to increase. So hopefully the budget situation will be better if we have increasing enrollment. To be, to be further open about this, we have a very healthy number of master's students, international students. But as you know, that is also subjected to the suggestions, whether the councilments around the world will grant visa interviews to international students. So we are trying to decipher all of that as we move forward with our plan. But the enrollment data looks good, our planning to open the campus looks good. We look forward to your help and your assistance in any way, shape, or form. And if you have any questions, if you want to know how you can help, please write to us and we'll respond to you. But given all of those, yes, we have budgets to worry about, as I said to you, but we are very hopeful that we can look forward. Let me move on to the next question, there is a question that says, have candidate students use outdoor spaces on campus, including the field? And I think the, the answer is mixed, the campus, the ground of the campus is open. Students can come and walk, and in fact, it's delightful to see the faculty and students that walk on the campus grounds, maintaining social distance, of course, as I said, I'm highlighted. But some of our other facilities like fields and arenas are closed. We are looking forward in our face opening plan to open those as well. But the answer, the short answer is that the campus grounds are open, you are welcome to come and walk on the campus grounds. But unfortunately, the fields and arenas and indoor spaces are closed to everybody at this point.
No, I, I have, I have no higher priority on campus than maintaining that we have safe campus and safe operation. We also have city ordinances that we need to provide by, at least until May 11th, we're not allowed to congregate in our city parks either. As part of our repopulation plan of campus, opening spaces, especially outdoor spaces, will be given serious early priority and phase in the evening, so we, we need to do it in a well thought out plan, make it safe in campus.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. So that's the end of the written questions that I have, but I know we have received a number of questions who are questioning once they're through and feel sorry for questions now.
Yes, thank you, Chancellor, we have received quite a few questions already this morning, and please keep those, those questions coming through Zoom on the Q and A portion of the portal. First question has to do with our distance education program. How do we plan to quickly market our competitive edge in distance education to help address the budget situation? Yes, how do we plan to quickly market our competitive edge in distance education as a way to address the budget situation?
Great, in, in a meeting just this past week, I met with the faculty advisory, audit, pick global meeting, as well as Matt Gunkel with the U M Assistant Chief E-Learning Officer, and S and T is now entering into the process of developing a memory and understanding between the U M Assistant E-Learning Initiative and our campus. And the U M Assistant E-Learning Initiative has tremendous marketing prowess that we believe will be of great benefit to the advertisement and marketing of our exceptional distance and online programs. We have a very strong presence, particularly in the realm of graduate professional education, especially concerning our corporate, many corporate partners, and of course, we'd like to expand that. Furthermore, we'd like to utilize that marketing prowess as well as our internal marketing prowess to improve marketing and create marketing for additional online learning experiences that we know will come about as a result of our intended growth in that domain, even before the COVID-19 situation, and certainly as a result of.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, let me, let me just add a little bit that if there is, if there's operational silver lining at all during this situation for us, it's in the fact that we have sharpened our online and distance education tool. That will come in handy, we intend to use it as a strategic tool. It will, it will allow us to keep the university to the world. No matter what you do, there is always a sector of the society that for various reasons did not come to the campus. And this will allow them to take advantage of the remarkable educational program that this institution has offered and is offering and will offer. And the other, the other advantage that this enabling capability now will provide is that we will, we will be able to deliver our programs in a multi-world all approach. I can, I can only see that the, the delivery of education of the future will include on-campus, in-person, online, very calendar, you know, we will, we will obviously have the fall, spring, and summer semester. But this tool will also allow us to fill the, the calendar gaps. There is no reason that we cannot have courses offered during the breaks, whether it's the winter break or summer breaks, the spring and summer, and summer and fall semester and so on. So we fully intend to take advantage of this new enabler that we have sharpened for ourselves. And we are, the programs of the future will take advantage of that. Thank you very much for that question, that was a, that's a very, very good question, and it behooves us to develop our programs and our tools, knowing that we have a new capability in our.
Thank you, Chancellor. The next question has to do with a hiring, hiring of a CIO for the camp. It's status on what the, what's going on with the hiring of CIO, some information.
Okay, all, let me just say a few words and then I'll pass on the question to our CFO. Their position currently reposed to the CFO, but I just wanted to mention the fact that, remember that the university is operational. Despite of all the activities that we need to do to balance our budget to, to, to make sure that our core mission is delivered. That means that we will continue to hire, we will have to continue to hire. We will be by far more careful and selective, but the, the, the operational mode for us is to make sure that we don't do something that will, will harm the future of the institution. So if we do not hire a position and something bigger will break because of that lack of hiring, then we will be mindful of that position, that person, that title, and we will continue our search to identify the good candidates and hire them. The CIO position is no different, but we have a process in place to identify the best candidate that this university can hire. And that process will continue until we identify the best candidate for that position. Having said that, that, that whole functional area falls in the domain of our CFO, and I'll let Eva respond.
Thank you, Chancellor. So we are being very thoughtful in this process and evaluating all of our different options, and we're also trying to be very sensitive to President Troy's directive to be slow and careful and thoughtful about hiring decisions that we're making. So we are, we are in that process, I hope to be able to make some, some type of more complete announcement in the next week.
Thank you, Eva, so, so the, the answer is the process will continue, we are going to identify a CIO that is fitting this university and can take us to the next stage. Remember, we are a, a research university, and the CIO that will, will, will be hired will have definitive strategic plans for how to lay down the infrastructure for the campus and improve what we have. In fact, if you recall that I mentioned earlier that President Troy has asked us to identify functions that can, that, that other campuses can benefit from. I can only see that our research infrastructure can, can benefit other universities because we are the, you know, the premier science and technology research campus of the system. And then we have the obligation to make sure that the processes that we put in place, IT included, can be beneficial to other campuses of the system as well. So you can see we have a multiplicity of considerations for this particular position. And we are going to continue our search until we identify suitable.
Thank you, Chancellor. We have a couple of questions here related, they're similar because they relate to layoffs or furloughs. One of them is if staff are laid off, will they receive severance pay or extended healthcare? The other question asks how furloughs might affect retirement funds for staff who were hired for the transitions to find contribution, so. Pick those together, Eva.
So with regard to options for, for layoffs, for short-term leave of absence or furloughs, there are lots of different tools that are being evaluated and not the same tool will be used in each situation, each situation will be unique and different. For those positions that are determined where layoff is the appropriate path forward, those employees will receive transition assistance, the collective rules. I believe that that is a minimum of two weeks and a maximum of twenty weeks, and it's based upon the years of service of the employee in a benefit eligible position. So for example, if an employee has five years of service and they were, their position was, one was tapped for a layoff, and they would receive five weeks of transition assistance. Medical benefits would continue during that period of time. Also, one of the policies has been on, in the collective rules for quite some time, but is used not nearly, not very often, is a temporary leave of absence. In those situations, an employee might be put on a leave without pay for up to three months, perhaps over the summer, or something similar to that. In that case, the employee would still receive their medical, would be covered by the medical benefits as well. With regard to all of these types of actions, whether it is a reduction in pay, whether it is a furlough, whether it is a temporary leave of absence, they would all have an impact on the retirement benefit for people who are vested in the defined benefit pension plan. For any individual specific questions, I would direct you to Martha Grisham, who is our retirement specialist on campus, and then she would work through each individual situation to explain exactly what the, the impact would be on a particular employee. There are, is some very good information on the U M System H R webpage on, under the benefits. There's a specific section on the defined benefit plan, and it speaks to all of those different types of questions. So I would refer people to go there and read, and then if they still have questions, then to contact Martha. She's very, very knowledgeable and will be able to help you.
Thank you, Kiva. The name is Marshall Grisham. If Marshall Grisham, you can look her up. Martha, Martha Grisham. And if you, if you can't find it, you can email us and we will direct your question to Martha. Thank you. Andy?
Thank you, Chancellor. We have a couple of questions regarding the repopulation plan of campus. So I'll direct these to Dr. Goodman. The first has to do with, in the repopulation plan, are we taking precautions or are there concerns about those in our campus community who are over 60, for example, or who have pre-existing health conditions, et cetera? The other question asks about the possibility of opening labs over the summer as part of our repopulation.
That's a, that's an excellent question. We've thought about all of these in our repopulation plan. It's a well-coordinated plan that is in its early stages. We still have a lot of vetting to do with that plan. But to speak particularly, you're really looking at, at two ends of the, of the repopulation plan. There's actually a phase six that starts in September. And each phase brings back a different portion of our, our student staff or faculty. Stage six, phase six is really a stage for those with health concerns and those that can continue to work at a distance should not consider returning to campus until the earliest of, of September or beyond. So we have made recommendations that those with health concerns do delay their, their repopulation plans. Other hand, we just finished phase one repopulation, which will really be month of April, where we have had essential personnel on campus, which includes police, healthcare, custodial, maintenance, landscaping. And research has started some repopulation. Phase two is really concentrated on, we met this morning about phase two being really the month of May. We'll see a lot of the research activities start to come back pretty quickly. But again, in a well-organized approach, that program has thought through what labs need to come back quickly and which ones can be delayed. We've looked through how we're going to protect those workers. So yes, both of those issues have been taken into account. They're both on the top of the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. Very good. Thank you. Question about the summer session. Dr. Roberts, the question has to do with the fourth summer session, I believe it's like twenty through August 15th, and is the plan for that to still be in place?
Yes, there has been no, that summer session will run no matter what. The current plan is to have courses offered on campus or in a hybrid format. And so that, that session will run whether or not we have to convert it entirely to the online session. But that, that session will run. We, ideally, we would like to use that session, of course, to, to give our students the opportunity for on-campus and face-to-face experiential learning as soon as possible. We're also using that four-week session as a way to sort of gently introduce, reintroduce students and learners to the campus before we have our major influx of, of students and learners being offered. Very good. Thank you.
Andy, if, if I may.
Yes.
I'm going to spoke a second ago, and I did want to apologize and correct my statement. Marshall Delane is our retirement specialist here on campus, and I know her very well, but I simply misspoke. So my apologies, Marshall.
Thank you. We've, we've experienced a series of years where we've had budget reductions and some layoffs previously. A question has to do with how we keep current staff from taking on additional duties due to, they're already taking on additional duties due to past budget cuts. And how will that be weighed as we look at further staff reduction?
Thank you, Andy. So the answer, the honest answer is careful. We, that's the moment, last year alone, we had a budget cut of about eleven and a half million dollars. So we, we took a heavy blow last year. And fortunately, all of this is due to the fact that we have had a steady decline in enrollment at all levels, in addition to other declines for the state support or other sources of revenue for us. So it has put us in a situation where we have to cut precipitously, you know, budgets and cut our budgets precipitously. We are now in this situation, we were hoping that our enrollment would increase, as I mentioned to you, given the fact that during the fall of last month, we had very little increase of enrollment, given that our enrollment is still up this year. But to answer the question directly is careful. I mean, we have to combine positions to some extent. And you are absolutely right. There comes a time where we simply have to cut services. We are hoping that we won't get to that situation because we are lean already providing our services. But we will be very careful in using our employees in a, in an efficient way. I always believe that our folks have various varieties of skills, skill knowledge ability. And we need to be mindful of their vulnerability even for we, this is, this is the time where we can look at our employee and say, well, they are doing this and they're doing it very well. But what, what other skills do they have that we can utilize in another area? So we have to look at the whole bandwidth and identify people who are overworked here. But then there are others that, due to the fact that they are fixed in their own domain, but they may have time and they are capable of helping this other option over here. We need to do, we need to be very mindful of identifying the skill wherever we have across the campus and utilizing it properly. And then there comes a time, there comes a time, I'll be honest. There comes a time that we've done all of that. We have harvested all the efficiencies that we could, that leveraged people's capabilities in a syn, in a synergistic way, but there comes a time where we have to cut services. So we are, this is a part of our contingency plans that I mentioned. We are, you know, our groups are looking to give you 10%, 15%, 40% contingency. At a local group level, they will identify these efficiencies that we can, we can hope.
Very good. Question having to do with faculty promotions and if they would be in ILO only or would they receive pay increases under the current situation? And how would that be justified when we're also planning for those or layoffs?
Faculty will still be receiving tenure promotion raises associated with those advancements in their tenure promotion raises. And the processes and the events of tenure promotion are one of the most time-honored professional accomplishments in the professoriate. And we do not intend to change the way in which we recognize that.
Very good.
In fact, we just completed our last year's cycle this past week by announcing the, the tenure promotion ace. Terrific group of faculty members. So the process will continue.
We have quite a few questions still to get through, and I'm afraid we, we may not be able to get through all of them today during the forum. But we will, as we have asked, to respond in writing to notes that we're not able to, to answer. So another question has to do with our student organization, recognized student organizations. Will funding for recognized student organizations be affected by budget cuts?
I think that. As many of you know, our recognized student organizations are, the funding that they receive is, comes from a direct fee that the students pay, that is part of the activity and facility fee. And those decisions for how that money is distributed is based upon the student government. And so they do make those allocations. So how those allocations will be impacted next year will be a direct result of the student credit hours that we teach on campus and how the student government association decides to distribute those.
Thank you, Kiva. Next question has to do with options available for students to graduate this May but have yet to complete their experiential learning requirement due to transitioning off campus.
Right, this has been a topic of a lot of patient. SMT, to be clear, has a required experiential learning aspect for all graduates at the undergraduate level. And we're working with departments very carefully to figure out how we can creatively meet that requirement and in some cases, depending on the student circumstances, waive that requirement. But we will not let that be a barrier to, to graduation and particularly for those students who are intending or, who are otherwise eligible to graduate this May. They, they'll have nothing to worry about.
Very good. Thank you. So a question about staff expectations. It's noted here that leadership took a 10% big cut, temporary big cut for the months of May, June and July. And should staff expect an across-the-board big cut?
So that is the part of the, the discussion that's going on right now. We have multiple tier approaches that we are considering. Again, as a part of 10%, 15%, 20% contingency planning. So we will move up from one stage to another, to another, to another. I can only tell you that across-the-board salary costs will be one of the final stages of the process. So the answer is that if we can get to where we want to go and we have to go through various stages, then we may not have to resort to that scenario. Frankly, I doubt that that would be the case, and there will be some, some aspect of cuts across the board. We don't know what that is right now. Obviously, we'll try to do everything we can to minimize that. The leadership here, 10% cut as a first step. And for this year, if you manage to be seen, what are we going to do for the next year? This year, the majority of our, we see a great majority of our allocation of the state already. It wasn't a big amount of load. That's right. Next year.
Yes. Yeah, this, this is, that, it's in the it's 11 o'clock that traffic study for 63 University Drive, HNTB. They're going to have a, a call. Everybody gets on the phone. Telecom. Yeah, they do that periodically. It's 11 o'clock today. So it's coming up. So if you guys something else we need to do, people want to go ahead. Oh, we do have, okay. Okay.
There are things we are doing now.
It's an emergency.
Have we listened to that for this?
Yeah, it's kind of
A few questions having to do with getting into some of the logistics.
Close session. First of all, we have some additional questions.
I don't know what's taken Pam to forgot what done.
Getting every fresh to this order. Stay at home longer.
I have a flight. I've only got a minute, very long, a minute one.
Okay, so we need to do an amendment.
It's just an amendment three, and it's just change of date and reassessment date.
Yes, the order. Order date would be the 23rd. And the reassessment would be
A week from today.
Would be the 30th.
Reassess on the 30th.
We, we did. I was reticent to say the very least, but I guess I, I feel like the redemnancy, I would rather have a resolution that we support the governor's.
Next, we really got two things. We've got our order and then we've also got a decision to follow governor's order. So we have two separate things going on, right?
Well, I don't know where we actually says we support the governor's.
Do we have two separate things going on, Pam?
No, we actually have the commission order declaring the state of emergency, which was
The initial.
Permitted the health department to limit the restaurant dining and bar dining, limit the size of the gatherings of groups to 15. And then that was amended to reduce the size to 10.
Did we ever, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then the subsequent amendments were just to continue that and continue that and continue that, keep it in effect. But we never really ordered, you never really issued a state of emergency because the governor came out right about the time we were considering that. And of course, the city of Raleigh also. But the governor came out and it was kind of like, okay, so.
We did not vote to, to follow the governor's orders.
We have to, we, we got to do it or we break it the law.
That's right, that's right.
And actually, the governor's order was really on DHSS.
Yes, he, I guess he instructed the director, and I have it here.
Randall Williams is the secretary. It's kind of referred to as the governor's order.
On April 3rd.
I felt sorry for yesterday. He was depressed constantly.
Randall Williams was askew.
He was.
Okay. Got it. Gotta call this person about L B A accreditation at some point.
Yeah, you don't. Why let that expire?
Did you guys have the G P S field badge? Did you already turn that ninety?
Yes, I think we turned it back. That was one of them.
Today?
Yes, it was the first.
Oh, it was the first one, yeah, but we did. Well, we decide, who did we decide? Are they a force on a state thing? Department of Health, they would have to do their thing.
Yes, I believe so. And I don't know if they really have a law enforcement arm, I'm gonna guess that they're probably. I believe control is the state enforcement agency.
If you gain your call of conversation, you, about how the enforcement of the governor's orders supposed to occur, who carries the burden to go out and say quit that? Is it our health department?
Back end of the year, the order.
States that, all means available. Local public health authorities are hereby directed to carry out and enforce the provisions of this order by any legal means, and I have that highlighted in question mark. The poll.
Did you, do I have it, Teresa, capable of losing it? The G P S thing we signed?
Well, there would have been.
Two, G P S.
And the two.
Well, Carol left the late, like five.
Uh-oh.
She's got everything over there. Oh, so I don't know. Okay, she'll probably let us know if she's.
Yeah, true.
But she's got to approve everything, so I have no idea. All right, we'll try to get any first. Yeah.
So, you know.
This order shall be observed throughout the state and enforced by all local and state health authorities.
I mean, it reiterates that.
Yeah, it reiterates that on my state.
A city is getting a complaint about a business that's old. And it's probably not an essential business.
Well, it is. It's our new ox is being born.
Right, it's not in the state limits, so that's why she's, Millie said to me.
Oh, oh.
And I suppose it's up to Ashley to do something, huh?
Well, it is, it's probably, maybe it comes over it. I know in the city of Raleigh, she just, you know, those impeachment carries may need to go with this and say, hey, let's yeah, not be heavy-handed moving.
All right, let me think about that a bit. You know, maybe the business is sort of new. It's real antique mall.
Is furniture necessary?
Are the furniture stores open? I think they are. Missouri Furniture in St. James. To make your point, I think you're getting with that. If there's furniture to be sold, and there isn't at that mall.
They would merely be under the number of fixtures allowed at any one time. Whether how big that is, is that more or less? There's no ten thousand, and it's got it upstairs. So maybe they'd be limited to ten acres inside of a building. I guess the central part is what that's. You know, the governor's order did not have an essential part to it, though. It was all, it was all built on social distancing. And, and the size of that particular place that you're talking about.
Yeah, true.
And I can't imagine there being more people.
Yeah.
And, and he also says that individuals may, individuals may also go to and from an individual's place of worship, provided that limitations on social gatherings and social distances, distances are properly adhered to. So it would appear that places of worship are closed down for this holiday, and are they on?
What, are you implying that the antique mall is a place of worship?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying this. Maybe there's some folks.
No people like that.
Social gatherings. More devoid social gatherings. Take people more. No ours. Places of public accommodation, opportunity, and service. Although he needs to be reasonably critical for me. For my babies, it really is.
I may not be more that way. I'll be whatever.
Before we propose to be in post-session. We just said emergency post-session. But Pam hasn't posted it.
Dude, piece of gun is handled. Congratulations on those minutes, Pam. You're just piling right through those, huh? You can be next, next day, pretty quick, please.
Oh, right before the half, that's right.